I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. As you all can see, we're wearing T-Nat shirts, and we'll get into that later on, but there's a girl in our community that's fighting some cancer, and she's doing very well, but I'm sure we'll get into that later on. We're on her team. So, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here. Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Present.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Okay, we're all here and accounting for bills payable. I'll entertain a motion, bills payable of $6,967.12.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $6,967.12.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support. Any discussion?
Of course, all the bills came the day after. I did bills payable.
The day after. So Stuart, Bouvet, and Whipple aren't getting paid at this meeting?
Not at this meeting. Maybe next one.
Okay.
Not unless they gave us a really good deal.
Hearing no discussion. All in favor of paying the bills payable of $6,967.12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have public comments. Do we have any public comments?
My name is Estelle Waller-Zack. I reside at 10371 St. John Drive for the last 21 years. And we have been before this board and the planning commission, and we have one neighbor that is upset over the view of allowing the building department to take something that was initiated for a building permit to be an extension of a home at 13'4 inches, but they allowed the upper part to go 15 inches. In our section of 311-1, it says, "This is supposed to be 330 feet in both directions, but they allow 332 for the new addition." But the main point why we're here is because we submitted a straight line waterfront setback for the rear waterfront, and we did it through the planning commission, but it was first submitted to the city attorney, who said it looked good. He gave it to the planner, who said he liked it, and gave it to Ms. Warwick Hart, who presented it at a planning commission meeting and said she will pass it to the board. That was months ago, and we just want to know, where is it? What's going on? When we had the issue of blocking our views, which our ordinances say, "unobstructed views" for the fences and all this other stuff, and then slowly the changes came to the ordinances, they eliminated the word opaque, now you're saying it's a decorative fence, a six-foot arborvitae that goes beyond the house, beyond the neighbor's house, up to the edge of their patio. So when they sit on a patio, they're looking at six-foot arborvitae's instead of the river that we've had for 82 years, a history of going out on our decks and porches. There's no privacy on the waterfront. Anyone who lives on the waterfront knows, when summertime comes, we're in our bathing suits, we're packing coolers, we're getting on board our boats, we're going on jet skis. What privacy? There's no reason for six-foot arborvitae's to go beyond the houses for privacy. And then the zoning board passes a motion, January 18th of 2017, two months after the home occupancy of this home. They passed with three-foot shrubs, trees pruned to eight feet. But two months later, the building department requests a letter to the zoning board of appeals, who goes over section 311, that says shrubs at three feet, trees pruned to eight feet, and they allow the neighbors to plant these. Now, I had Ms. Valentine come out there, because nobody from this board wanted to, and she wasn't a board member at the time, and she did say there's nothing she could do. But her opinion is, she saw from our side why we're upset. Not one other home along that North Channel waterfront, from the Old Lyles to Sassy Marina, has blocked a view of a neighbor. Only one new home. And because they're a higher tax base, and because they had their plans in the site plan committee for 18 months before a shovel went in the ground, everything was done legally. But this unobstructed view package, that has not been done legally. There, it was no ordinance at the time. They were planted on May 19th of 2017, other than the interpretation done by this zoning board of appeals. There were nobody at this present meeting that the ZBA had. The appeal they had left the hall. So it was just only the zoning board appeal members that read a letter and passed an interpretation on section 311-1. That's why we came up and said it's a violation. They threw the word "arborvitae's" in section 311-1. They'd never had that word, "arborvitae's." That, to me, is a violation of the ordinance that changed the way we look at things on the waterfront and allowed them to plant arborvitae's past the house, because they want privacy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other?
Where is this straight line sound?
I was going to tell you that we just got it back not too long ago from the county, and they approved it, and it's probably going to be in our, in the next board meeting or the, or two board meetings from now.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Now, I think that was your original question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Kathy Harrison, 301 Monroe Boulevard at Hurson's Island, to Artie and the board. In my opinion, the Clay Township needs to clean house and hire two new code enforcers that are interested in their job and want to uphold the Clay Township motto, which is pride. The letter R stands for responsibility and accountability. We take responsibility for achieving results and hold ourselves accountable for our actions. For my own personal dealings, this year with Mr. Prott and Mr. Brown Jr., I hold them both accountable for their inactions. As senior warden at St. Paul's Church on the island in July, the owners of property on Orchid, without applying for a permit or survey, build a secondary structure which 10 feet of it is on the church property, and they are in violation of four ordinances. I believe Mr. Prott was in violation of his doing his job as a code enforcer. If he had been riding around, looking at new building, taking notes, and maybe even a picture or two, and finding out before this, and finding out if their permit was issued, the structure could have been stopped, and our church wouldn't be in the mess we are in. Your building department needs to be on the same page. This is why. In August, I complained to Cindy Babett about the property. She told me it wasn't about ordinances, but a property issue, and the township couldn't help me, and I had to take him to civil court. I still felt in my mind that it was an ordinance issue. I talked to Cindy twice more in the same answer. Finally, I wrote a letter to Mr. Brown, and I told him my problem, and I even listed the four ordinances they were violating. My last sentence was, "Mr. Brown, would you look at this structure and make a decision?" I believe I shouldn't have had to beg to get something done. This is where no one knows who on, who is on first. I get a call from a second party, that Artie told them to let me know that the structure was to come down or be removed. I was so happy my problem was finally solved. Well, it's October, and the structure is still up. November 5th, I emailed Cindy, saying, "Did Mr. Brown even inform the property owners about his decision?" So here is her email. "Hi Kathy. We submitted a letter to them to remove the structure right after we received a letter of your survey. It is my understanding that the structure has been removed from the church property. Sid is scheduled to go out today and take a look. The deadline to be removed was November 3rd." Well, now this is December. The owners only took down 10 feet that was on the church property. The rest is still an ordinance violation. So you can hear all the confusion. No one knows what the other one's saying. Secondly, without the code enforcers doing their job, Clay Township is losing money. I know of two structures that went up on a weekend with no permit. So no money goes out for permits, and the new structures aren't added to their tax bill, because they don't even know about it. Maybe it's time for some updates in the building department, and some new enthusiastic code enforcers.
Thank you, Kathy. Well, I'll check in on what the status is on that billing, but we did tell them, I believe we told them they have to get a permit for it too, which I'm sure they did not get, so.
I've seen.
I'll check into it, Kathy. Thanks. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Moving along on the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of November 19th, and synopsis, check reports, and a request from Assessor Lawton for her MAAO renewal for $175, and Wendy Meldrum for her MCAT renewal of $75.
Support.
Okay, motion is support. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the supervisor's report. It's been a while, seems like. Construction on the first Anchor Bay Bridge is almost complete. The only thing that's left on it is they have to put one overlay over the existing road, and that won't happen until the spring. There will, and also I have confirmation from the road commission, they're going to do the second bridge on Anchor Bay Drive in the spring, and the third one in the fall. So those should be done, completed by the end of next year. Also, with freezing and thawing, freezing and thawing, and a ton of rain that we received last month, some of our gravel roads are in hurt. I've talked to the county, county road about getting them graded and trying to, they've got to wait till the thaws out enough. So I was hoping they would have got it done today. I don't think they have, but we're waiting for a little bit of a thaw, where they can get out and grade them all, and that should take care of some of those potholes. Maintenance work on the swartout drain is slated to start soon. They could have even actually started today, I'm not sure. And this kind of depends on weather conditions. I just want to remind everybody, all county drains has a total of 200-foot easement, 100-foot on each side from the center of the drain. And so, you know, if you live on there, they may be working, you know, behind your house, If you have any discharge pipes or anything going into the drain, you should flag it so the contractor knows it's there. And also, if you like to keep any wood that they may be possibly removing from the drain, get ahold of the county drain commission and see if they can set you up with some firewood if you, if you want it. Let's see, the electronic signs that the DDA paid for are in front of the township hall and the mainland fire station, and thanks for them, and they're up and working good now. Met with the county road, actually, it's road commission, falls under Ira, Elginak, and Clay, ours, myself, and about the maintenance of the sewer interceptor interceptor lines. And we're suspecting some issues going forward, specifically near where the Pearl Beach pump station is. And once, we're going to have that camera in probably, what, two weeks, John?
Yeah, 10 days.
10 days, two weeks, and once that's done, we'll, we'll have more information on that going forward. Hopefully, it's not too bad, but you don't know until you get an eyeball on it. Also, for next year's operating, both Elginak, Ira, and Clay, we voted for a capital improvement contribution to the wastewater treatment plan of a total of $200,000. And so our share of that will go up from $52,000 to $70,000 next year. They got some capital improvement things coming up over the next three years. And basically how that works, we like to, we take into account everything that has to go out, and we like to have about $400,000 or $500,000 in that, in that fund. And once we have that much, we'll eliminate this, this fee. Sometimes it gets eliminated, or adjusts down or up as we see fit. So I just want to let the board know for that for next year, that'll be on next year's budget. Water plant update, the new air compressor that we bought, it seems like a long time ago, will be online in mid-December. And also the same with the low-service VFD, the pump. And the raw water intake monitoring equipment is online and working well. That's the hearing to Erie initiative, where we check, we monitor the incoming water. And yes, getting ready for our SWIPY permit and everything that goes with it. Oh, boy. If you don't know, that's, oh, yeah. For our seven, our seven catch basins, we have to do all kinds of paperwork and pay all kinds of money and, and everything, so more fun in the future for that. If anyone needs a smoke detector, get ahold of our fire department. We have some for you. You know, this time of year is whenever, whenever there's a fire, it's a tragedy, but especially now. And I'd like to warn everyone, don't overload your electrical outlets with Christmas decorations. I know I've been guilty of that in the past, too. It can be, that can cause problems. Met with Cindy Elginak, and we're going to set, trying to set a meeting up with Comcast to see if we can improve the quality of these meetings on Channel 6. They're low-definition, they're all grainy, and with today's technology and everything, I think they should be a clearer picture, a better picture, and, I mean, we're still using old CDs to show it on a DVD player. And we're hoping that Comcast will give us a little upgrade, so it might make sense to get some high-def cameras and, and so make it more pleasant for the viewers watching these meetings. Let's see, where was I? Let's go on. Pearl Beach. We renewed our participation in the fire, state fire insurance withholding program. If you don't know how that works, God forbid there was a house destroyed or up to 50% destroyed, and there's an insurance payout. The insurance company has to give us, I believe it's 15% or a max of $12,000, where if they don't fix it or do the repairs, and I believe they get two to three years, we have that money to tear the house down. And we've actually done it twice. Exercised our right. Yes. Where, you know, the people walk away, instead of having a half-burnt structure sitting there and blight and everything. So what happens, the insurance company has to give us the money, we keep it in escrow until it's either fixed and completed, or, you know, they walk away and we do remove the structure. So we, we're back in that program again. Our building department did close the case on the sunken boats on the marine on the South Channel. The boats have been removed, the two boats have been removed, we had to take, go to court twice on that, and they, they did pay all the necessary fines that were levied against them. Pearl Beach Lions is doing our Christmas in the park this Saturday. It was scheduled last Saturday, they canceled it because it was a washout. When the weatherman says 100% rain, you have a pretty good chance, and it did. So they rescheduled for December 8th. Elginak Choir, a high school choir arrives at 4:00 to sing Christmas carols, and Santa here is supposed to arrive, arrive at 4:30, and there's going to be sleigh rides with Santa and the tree lighting and free hot cocoa and hot dogs and...
I believe they're looking for another choir.
Are they?
I think there was a conflict, yeah.
Ooh, I did not hear that. I hope we don't have to sing.
I know.
Would not be good. Okay, there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on in our rec programs. If you're on Facebook, like, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like it, or call our building department for details. We have bus game, bus ride, trips going to Red Wings, arts and crafts workshops, all kinds of good stuff, exercise and cooking classes. I actually went to a window painting class last week, and I thought I did pretty good.
How long did it go to that?
Yeah. A window painting? I painted a win, and I painted a picture of my old boat and the ferry on it. Okay. If I can do it, anybody can do it. So, all right, there we go. Next, we have a fire chief report.
For the month of November, I attended two meetings, St. Clair County Chiefs Association, general business was discussed, and also one on the island, the Hurson's Islands Homeowners Association. The fire department, new hires are working out very well. I hope to have them on shift by January. I've been putting them on shift, worked as a third, third rider, so eventually we're going to put them out on their own, so they're working out very well. Fireboat One was pulled out, or we plan on pulling it out because of the cold weather approaching, so that was pulled out today, in fact. The fire prevention trailer, we had it trunk wrapped, half of it for the, for the roof because of the winter snow and stuff, so it doesn't affect the seals on the, on the roof, so it pretty much protects that, so that was taken care of. Thank you, Tajmo Marine. Fire department's getting ready for the winter season. I just would like to remind the residents of the island and on the mainland to check your smoke detector batteries. If not, if you have not replaced those, please do so along with your CO2 detectors. And if you are burning wood, to make sure that your chimney gets inspected, and if it needs to be cleaned, please clean it of any obstructions that might be inside of it, so...
Be careful burning wrapping paper.
Yes, definitely. And last but not least, I'd like to thank TriHospital, too. We conducted a class, a first aid class, CPR class on the island. It went over well, very well over on the island. We had 21 people that signed up for it last month, and I plan on having another one in 2019.
Sounds good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, I still have the Downriver Firefighters Association. I don't have anything new on that. We're waiting, I guess. New business, we have a presentation from our auditor, Stuart Bouvet, Whipple, I have Paul and Tammy here. I'll come on up and...
Okay, well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I passed out a copy of your annual financial statement for the year ended June 30th, 2018. It's about 65 pages long, so what we try to do is condense it in this little presentation packet, where we'll try to touch on everything in a few pages, so we don't take up your whole evening. As you know, you contract with our firm to do your annual financial audit. We come down and spend about two weeks with your staff auditing the numbers. Everybody's very cooperative, we appreciate that. It facilitates the audit, not only while we're doing the audit, but throughout the year, we have quite a bit of contact back and forth between your office and our firm. One of the first things, we turn to page one on the presentation there, one of the first things in the audit report is something called the independent auditors report. It's technically the only portion of the report that belongs to Stuart Bouvet and Whipple, and it's where we give an opinion on whether your financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. And you have what they call an unmodified or clean opinion, that's what you're trying to get, and basically it means everything is presented in accordance with general accepted accounting standards. After you approve it tonight, we have to send it on to the Department of Treasury. That's what they're looking for. There's a questionnaire that goes along with it, that we have to answer about 20 or 30 questions, but they definitely key on that opinion. The next couple items, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, something called the management discussions and analysis letter, it's about a five-page letter in there, that just kind of explains to the reader some very summarized information. We're going to touch a little bit more detail. It is required to get that clean opinion, though. Also, there's really two sets of financial statements, as I've explained in past years in your financial statement. There's the way commercial entities reported, which had started to be, were required to be put into governmental statements about 10, 12 years ago. And I just kind of key on that, because there really is two different numbers in there. We're going to spend our time on the Roman numeral four, what they call the fund financial statements, and this is how you budget, when you approve your budget, and when you're doing your internal accounting. The general fund you'll see as of June 30th, 2018, had assets of $2,747,098. You had liabilities of $142,932, which left a fund balance as of June 30th, 2018 of And you can see the 2007 numbers, 17 numbers right next to it. Number two there is what they call a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance. This year, your general fund took in $1,604,677. You spent $1,392,285. You transferred to other funds, a net $51,751. So for the year ended June 30th, 2018, your general fund was to the good $160,641, so positive $160,641. We always include some graphs for you. If you turn back to page five, some pie graphs, just to tell you, show you as a picture where your, some of your, your money comes from. As you're well aware, about 50 cents of each of your general fund budget comes from intergovernmental, state shared revenues there. The next largest piece is taxes, 25%. And you can see they stay pretty consistent from year to year. Intergovernmental was 46% the year before, taxes was 24%, but very consistent from year to year of where your dollars come from in the general fund. The next page, next page six graph, just shows where your general fund expenditures went to, or go to. The biggest chunk there is something called the general government, and that includes the supervisor, clerk, treasurer, assessor, a whole bunch of different categories, and it amounts to about 71% of your general fund budget. I always caution, when you're looking at pie graphs, be careful comparing one community to the other, because you have a separate fire and police fund that a lot of communities, that's combined with your general fund. So all of a sudden, when you put those, that general piece becomes a very small piece compared to everything else. But this just gives you a comparison from year to year there. The only change primarily was in the public works, and last year you had quite a bit, about a extra $100,000 of road work that you had done in 2017 compared to 18. That's the only major difference. Page seven, just takes a look at all the expenditures of the township, and when you put all those funds, all your funds together, the biggest piece of your, your pie goes to public safety, police, fire, 46 cents or almost 150 cents of every dollar goes to public safety. The next biggest is public works, 14%. And then general government, you can see, gets down to a reasonable 13%. Sewer, 7%, water, 16%, and you can see each of the other three small pies. But just gives you an idea of where the dollars are spent for Clay Township. If we turn back to page two, in addition to your general fund, there's a lot of what they call special revenue funds, funds that are set up to control various revenues of how they come in and are spent. And you can see the revenues and expenditures for each one of them, really nothing out of the ordinary. You'll see the police fund's probably the biggest, where you had expenditures over revenues of $137,000. Other than that, pretty much everything, revenues and expenditures are very close. Number two there, it just lists the fund balances as of June 30th, 2018 of each of those funds, and you'll see they were all positive. There's no deficits in any of your funds. Number C, just, you have a cemetery perpetual care fund, you took in $2,932, you transferred to the general fund, or to your cemetery fund, $643, so you were to the good $2289 in your perpetual care, and your perpetual care at June 30th had $68,698 in it, $696, sorry. If you turn over to page three, there's also a debt service fund that took in, had revenues of $5,799. You had debt payments of $57, $550, $57,550. You transferred from the general fund $51,000, so really, with the transfer, just at the expenses there, and it's a debt service fund to pay the colonial, colony, colony, yes, debt service. Number E is your enterprise funds, your water and sewer funds. These funds operate similar to a business, and what we've done here is kind of listed your revenues and expenditures there, and you'll see if you go, you can see, you list each of your operating revenues, operating expenses. You had what they call a change in net position of a $600,000... You had what they call a change in net position of $604,000 in your water operating and $175,000 negative in your sewer. But really, the cash results, because there's depreciation in those, if you go down, kind of number two, says net increase. Your water fund had a net increase in cash of $517,490, and your sewer fund was to the good $125,309. Your working capital, just to try to tell you, if you had to do a project or how much money you would have available to do things, your sewer fund would have about $2,474,000, your water operating, I mean, and your sewer would have $723,142. That's a real, real quick synopsis of the 65-page report. In addition to auditing the numbers, we spend a lot of time looking at your processes to make sure that you have good controls back and forth. There's a couple letters stuck in the back of the audit report. If I could just touch on them for a minute, you can, they should pull right out, except for mine, don't. The first one says independent auditors' report on internal control. They should just be stuck in the back. This is a letter where if we become aware of any weaknesses in your control, we're required to communicate it to the board. There's just a couple things. One of them is a technicality, and the other one was just something unusual that's already been taken care of. We put there's a lack of segregation of duties over one area. And during the year, you had just allowed the treasurer's department to have access to the accounting records. We like to make sure that the treasurer and clerk's office is totally separate and that the treasurer's office can't make entries to your accounting system, that they have to go through your clerk's office. That's already been changed when we brought it to your attention during the audit. My understanding, it was immediately changed, and there was nothing really, I mean, wrong other than it just circumvented some controls that we had set up to try to make sure that you had real good checks and balances. The second one there is more of a technicality. When Enron and everything was going on, they came up with this idea that everybody should have somebody on staff that can draft the sets of financial statements. Clients our size rely on the auditors to do that. That's what you contract with us to do. We pull it together, but technically, it is, you know, you're relying on outside agency to do that. The second letter is called the audit communication letter. Because CPA firms are not required to come to a meeting like this, we appreciate the opportunity to come and answer any questions and go through these letters and the audit report. It just explains whether we had any difficulty. As I started out, the audit goes pretty well as planned. We come in, we help you pull your year end together, we audit the numbers and pull it together. The very, there's a very last page, if we become aware of a couple items that we just want to bring up and we talk to management about, we just attach it to this letter. When we get done the audit, after we pull it all together, we come out and meet with a supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, and we go through it page by page. We spend a couple, three hours going through this audit report in depth, a lot more than 15 or 20 minutes I'm doing tonight. But these are some of the things that we just discussed during that meeting, and we just attach it just for your information. Anything you'd like me to cover more in depth? Overall, you're in good financial condition.
Anybody have any questions for Paul?
Yeah, page six of the graph that shows, page six?
Yes.
Hold on, expenditures from 2017 to 2018, looked like it was a difference between 11% and 4%. I lost it now.
Public safety, or?
It was on the chart. No, it was the chart between, that was the second chart, I thought. Oh, here, this page. Yeah, you had, on others, it said 6% for 2018 as far as revenues, and then 11% on 2017 is the other. Do you identify any of those revenues?
Which page are you on, sir?
Page five.
Five? Okay, what two numbers are you talking?
The two charts, 2018, where it says other, 6%, it says the other 11%.
Oh, the other 11%.
Do you remember what's?
Just go ahead.
Was the insurance reimbursement that you received a year ago for the issue that was going on with the prior clerk, actually?
Okay.
So, that's brought in as revenue in 2017, and you can have that issue in 2018, so your revenues went down.
Okay. Thank you.
All in all, we're in pretty good financial shape.
Yes, sir.
No big red flags other than what you've noted, right?
No, no.
Okay. Our fire department's fund balances, although it could be healthier, was much improved from the year before.
Yes, sir. Went up about, you know, 10 grand, 8, 10 grand, or 5,462. Had revenues over expenditures for your fire department.
Right.
Yeah. Up slightly.
So, we gotta work on police a little bit, tightening our belt there. Any other questions for Paul or anything? I know there's a lot to...
There's a lot to digest, that's for sure.
I'll make a motion to accept the annual audit provided by Stuart Bobay and Whipple.
Accept and file?
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any other discussion? Very none, all in favor, saying a fight by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks a lot for all your work.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. What a job.
Thank you.
Every once in a while, you know, damn auditors, they got...
Well, they keep us out of jail.
Yeah, I know.
Nobody's going to jail this time.
We have another eight months in the clear now, we start all over again.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, next, we have a discussion about our master plan. I'm not sure who's gonna take the lead. Was that you, Mark?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yeah. The planners had brought up a, well, it's been some time now about updating the master plan. I don't know if everybody has their copy of the master plan or not.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, it's, every five years, it's supposed to be upgraded. We're in, one year in deficit right now. I realize that we went out for, at the planners and gave us a bit of a rather high number. However, after talking to the planners, and Kathy Swarker, the chairman person at the planning commission, has a better handle on it than I do as far as what we can do at the planning commission level on updating the master plan. So, that's where I'm coming from if we want to talk to the planners in depth, but it's something that we should happen rather quickly.
Yeah, I, in fact, I brought to our planners' attention, had to be four months ago.
Right.
That it needs to be reviewed, and I gave them a lot of just brainstorming thoughts that I had personally, what needed to be addressed. And just so the board knows, I mean, he gave us a quote for 30 grand for a review, and I thought that was pretty high. Since then, I did get a quote from the county's planning. The county's planning department will actually come in and do it also for us. Their quote was between 10 and 15,000. I have talked to, I know they're just finishing up the city of Elginak, and I talked to, I believe it was Port Huron Township and East China Township all use them, and they were happy with their services. But to tell you the truth, I haven't gone any more, you know, any more on that as far as which way we should go or not. Haven't had any discussions with our current planner.
When you reference East China and Port Grashit, I believe, or Port Huron Township, you said they were happy with their service. Are you referring to the county services?
Yeah, they all hired the St. Clair County's planning department to do their review of their master plan.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And Elginak did, and they're just finalizing it, actually, in the next month or two. And what they did, I'm not sure if I like it or not, they actually incorporated their parks and rec plan within the master plan. I think they did that because their parks and rec plan needed to be updated at the same time, and it was just more efficient for them to do that. Their master plan isn't quite as in-depth as it is for ours. We have, you know, we're just bigger, it's the nature of the beast.
It would be overwhelming if they were condensed together.
Right, I don't think that would work out well in our case, but that's what they're doing in Elginak.
The last time that we updated our master plan, did we use the private firm or did we use the county?
It was a private firm. When, oh, it was, actually, it was even before Clearzoning, wasn't it? Yeah. Yeah, it was a private, the firm doesn't exist anymore. What happened, they basically went out of business. We hired up another firm to do our planning, and we were very happy with them. He merged with, that company merged with another company, it was, then it became Clearzoning. And the original planner shortly after that had health issues, and he retired. And then, Giffel, the company that we have now, bought out Clearzoning. So, we kind of inherited our planner.
I got you.
So, I thought, you know, we should, might be time we look for a new planner or not. You know, we inherited him, we didn't actually go out and hire him. So, I was, my own mind, I think, you know, if we want to make a change there or not, if we're fine with Webster Giffel, that's good, but if not, you know, we should make the change before we do the master plan. And that's what I mean. I did get a quote from, oh, what's Karen's last name, who used to do our...
She's no longer there.
Right.
From Giffel, yeah, she's no longer there.
Right, but...
Rod Arrow has taken her place.
Right.
However, we got two young guys on the planner, on the, or, for his planners to come in now, and they are breaking their backs to make sure they're doing everything right.
Okay.
At this point in time, for me to say, yeah, let's get somebody else, would probably be a negative.
Okay. Okay.
I think we have an obligation to at least look at getting a quote from somebody else when they turn up in for $30,000, so.
Are there plans?
Go ahead.
Are there plans that we all could have access to, to look at?
Master?
Master plan.
Well, our existing master plan?
Our existing master.
Yeah. We all have a copy of the master plan, it's online.
Yeah, okay. I'll just check it.
Yeah.
Well, I would give Giffel's a chance to re-quote, basically, what we want to do. I think as far as the planning commission concerned and being with ordinance 126, we can probably handle that, but...
See, it's hard for me to judge because I can't even go to a planning commission meeting to, really, but I'm supposed to.
I have one.
I know Karen, she was gonna, she submitted, or was gonna submit a quote to do it. I know, I believe we were happy with her. She, you know, she would work independently for us. I haven't even met the new people, is it Eric?
Yeah, Eric, and I forget the other gentleman's name. He relatively knew, but Eric is doing pretty good.
So, I mean, basically, that's where I'm at. But, you know, I could get ahold of Rod and say, hey, you know, sharpen your pencil or justify the $30,000 expense.
I should have, I don't know, I didn't see the quote.
Right.
I imagine it should be detailed in some sense.
Yeah, it wasn't very detailed, it was just a quick email.
Quite a bit of difference from the county.
I know that, you know, you have to do public hearings on it and everything else. In fact, I think Elginak's is coming up here pretty quick. So, I mean, there is a lot to it, but one advantage I thought of having the county doing it, and they're doing Elginak and other communities around us, and they already know what the other communities around us are doing. And that could, you know, help us in some ways, so.
That's a good point.
But yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem getting ahold of Rod and having him do that. To tell you the truth, we've been so busy, that it hasn't been on top of the list.
And follow up with Karen.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, as a board, we're having discussion on, first and foremost, whether or not we need to update our master plan?
I believe we do.
Okay.
And I put it in the budget to do it, just because going conservative, I put $30,000 into budget to do it.
In this year's budget?
Yeah. And, but, you know, if we can get it for 10 to 15, I'm for that, too, if it's just as good or, you know.
How long does the process take? Is it a couple of months?
Oh, three to four.
Three to four months?
Yeah, maybe more. I think with the, I think from talking to others, if we did it with the county, it would probably take a little longer than we did with the private company.
Okay.
But, you know, it's not really a, it is, but it isn't real time sensitive. You know, we don't have a hard date, it has to be done here. It's recommended that it's looked at every five to seven years. And we're in year six.
Well, I was just going by the...
Right.
Our Clay Township Procedure Book, which has five years or so.
Yep, exactly. So...
And as a board, I'm sorry, Joanne.
Go ahead.
I just wonder if you could elaborate on our role as trustees as in part of the master plan?
Well...
What would you be looking for from us?
Well, we have to figure out how to pay for it, which we did in the budget.
Yep.
And it would be our decision to say, you know, the county's gonna do it, Webster Giffel's gonna do it, or a third party's gonna do it.
Okay.
And after that, the planning commission pretty much takes over the process. And, you know, they, with the help of whoever does it, compiles the master plan. They have to have public hearings and that sort of thing. I believe they approve it, and I believe it goes to the county for approval. I, and I'm not even positive if it comes before us or not, but it could come before us for the final adoption. I think it does.
And the time element...
Yeah, we did the rec one, so it probably does.
Right, the time element takes to do that, is if you segment the plant, the master plan, then you have a public hearing for each segment. That's time consuming.
Oh, yeah.
So, be prepared for that. And you should take a look at the content and basically what our input and the content's going to be as well. So, we have a play in that, I believe, so.
And the master plan, it's a document that really looks forward not, I mean, 20 years from now.
Change, we're always in change.
You know, what the plan is not today or tomorrow, but actually 20 years from now.
It's a wish list.
It's a wish list.
Pretty much.
And there, you know, okay, is this gonna be the commercial, you know, and what type of commercial, you know, residential, size of lots?
So, in my spare time, I will dig out the plan from 20 years ago for you to review to see kind of where we're at.
That'd be fantastic.
That's a good practice.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, but it is interesting to go through and look at, actually. There's a lot of detailed maps in it, and, you know, they look at infrastructure right down to broadband, you know, that type of thing.
Texture of soil and all kinds of things, yeah.
So, well, what would the board think about tabling this decision for one month? And that would allow us maybe opportunity to not only dive into the existing master plan, but also to interview with the county and also interview with the private firm? Perhaps we'd be ready to make a decision by that time? Set that up maybe as an agenda item, or?
Yeah, we can postpone it for a month. I...
Well, it was just a discussion, we don't postpone anything.
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
I can tentatively put it on our agenda for some time in January, and we can revisit it.
Well, since there is such a difference between the two, the fifth account, difference between the county's charges and this other firm, can we make sure that we have apples to apples and before our next decision?
Well, that's what I thought we'd get from Giffel-Webster. Well, that's what I thought, we'd get from Giffel-Webster, a more detailed, okay, how many man-hours or what, what's this gonna take?
That's quite a money difference to-
Of doing.
Not ask the question.
Um, I'm, I'm constantly in talks with Dave Struck, the county planner. I, in fact, I have a meeting with him this next week. We're looking at, uh, our, the countywide trail network and where the gaps are, and how to fill the gaps, you know, the, both bike trails and, you know, walking trails and to finish the bridge to, to Bay.
Kayak Trails.
Right. Bridge, Bridge to Bay project, and, and a few others. I told him how the DDA is looking at doing, you know, extending a mile, a mile-long bike path along Fruit and, and tying that into hopefully with Elginak. So, I made sure Elginak knew that for their master plan that they're doing now. So, yeah, I, I have no problem of getting some more information, getting the ball going. Okay, anything else on that? Moving right along, we have resolution 201851, establishing water rates. Before you, um, I happen to say, we're recommending that we do zero increase. Asked Paul Stewart-Pové-Wipple to, uh, look at what we have coming up and, and where we're, we're at with the rates. And, uh, we think we're, right where we're at now is, uh, is, is, is good enough and, uh, and we do have a, a little bit of a fund balance there. And we don't see any reason to raise the water rates at all for this, uh, next year. Hopefully two years, but I sure don't, wouldn't want to say that today. But I'm confident this year we don't need a, a rate in our water. So this is just renewing what they are right now.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-51, establish water rates.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion?
I just have one, one question on the colony water main.
Yeah.
Is that going to increase or decrease the water consumption coming from the head end, Elginak?
No, same.
Okay.
Yeah, that project, in fact, we were just talking about, we should have a, a pre-construction meeting on it pretty quick, and, and that should get rolling here pretty quick, but it's, um, as far as I know, it's, it's, you know, well, they have the end of June to get it done, right?
Right.
Okay.
Probably starts first of the year.
Yeah. So I'm hoping to have a, you know, we should have a pre-construction meeting on that with the people who are doing it, Piper Zach. But yeah, I'm happy to say, you know, and, that being said, we're, we're one of the lowest, uh, um, what we charge for, everyone complains, oh, my water, my water, but yeah, I get it, but we're one of the lowest in the county as far as what, what we charge for water too. So, and, and I'm happy that we're able to freeze it and, uh, freeze the water, huh? But, uh, it, uh, yeah, we're, 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 we're okay keeping it as where we're at right now.
Took a while to get to that point.
It did, and-
Took a long time, yep.
And I remember the first time, you know, two months I was in office, so already, our water is in hor, you know, financially is in horrible shape, horrible shape. And, uh, you know, I, I, overall, our infrastructure is pretty good, we got a, a couple projects we're gonna need to do. I'm not, I don't really want to entertain until we retire paying some bonds that were almost up. But eventually, just so the board knows, we have a, our, our weak link in the whole system is, uh, the water main, it runs from Butterfield, basically where Nook is, to, um, Willow Court, and that's where the old Cheers Restaurant was. Um, and-
The whole DDA district.
What's that?
The whole DDA district.
Yeah, just about. And I, uh, we did, I did ask for Project Control to give us a kind of a guesstimate on what it would take to, uh, to do that. You know how many feed it is, you know how many water taps we have to put in, and within a couple $300,000, you know, are we talking 2 million, 3 million, or what? And at the same time, we do that project, I want to put another feed, it'll probably go to Harson's Island. And that would, that, DEQ will love us for that too, 'cause, um, you know, they give us a report of our weaknesses, and that's the two things that are, well, use, it was a colony, but, but we're taking care of that. And the other two is our, our old water line, it's, uh, you know, 75 years old, and we need another feed to Harson's Island. Now it'll more than likely be, go across where Island Drive, right over here, across the river. So, and that will help pressure out too. So, uh, we're getting a, a guesstimate on, on that cost just for planning purposes.
Speaking of water pressure, um, the building department keeps filling applications and permits, and there, there's some big changes possibly in the works for some potential subdivisions around our area, so, so do we have an idea, um, our break-even point or a point where, where we'll have to put up our water tower? And does that factor into our decision of not raising the rates at this time?
Um, I don't think, I mean, they'll tell us, won't they?
They, you know, currently our capacity's pretty good at the water plant.
Yeah.
We're not even close to, to max.
At the water plant, but he's talking about water tower.
Yeah, and that's something the engineer would, um, flow test as the projects come in.
It really depends on where too. Like if you put a big project on the end of, like, Deckers or at the, the north part of town or on Harson's Island, that's gonna affect pressure a lot more than if you did it right here where, where we have all kinds of pressure.
But the short answer, I think, Chris, is short-term, we're good right now.
Yeah, we're good. Yep. Any other discussion or, or questions?
I think we're ready.
We have motion of support, right?
We do.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shortky?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next we have, uh, resolution 201852, zoning ordinance amendment 126, uh, provide update regulations, placement of accessory structures and definition of a lot line. And I believe this is concerned with if you own property on a corner of exactly which way is the front and which is the side yard. It spells that out. And it also says, there was one change on where you place accessory building, it shall not, how it will read, it shall not be erected in any front or required side yards. And before, um, it, it said it shall not be erected for any front or required-
Right.
That's weird.
I think it just ended with front before.
Front, okay. In any front yard, but also, it, it's including the side yards now.
So basically, you don't want to put an accessory building in the front of your property or on the side of your house?
On, well, in the required-
In the required setback.
The required setback. You can put it in there, just that it can't be in the required setback. So if you have a 20-foot required setback on your front yard, you can't build it 10 feet from the road. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion to support resolution number 2018-52, the zoning ordinance amendments 126 for Clay Township, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support. Any more discussion on this? I know the planning commission hashed it out, we did public hearings, but-
We did.
Was there any, uh, much discussion on, on this ordinance?
No, not on this one.
Okay.
No, not this one.
Not on this one.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shortky?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have resolution 201855, prohibition of marijuana establishments ordinance. As everyone well knows, the state, uh, in the last November election passed, um, allowing recreational marijuana, and that law goes into effect summer 6 in two days.
It does.
Hmm?
Said it does.
And, uh, what, what happens is, uh, the municipalities, if they don't want the, the commercial establishments, have to opt out, and that's what this is for. I've, uh, I've done a lot of reading and, and things on, on this. Everyone says it's gonna be a windfall for cash, you know, for the municipalities. Not so much for the locals. Um, the locals, there, there's an excise tax of 10% on the sales, and of that, the local government gets 15% of that, so basically we get 1.5%. And, um, it's, it's, uh, cash, since it's a ca, it's a cash business, 'cause it's still against the federal law for people to sell marijuana. And so no credit card processing companies will process credit cards for these people, so it's basically a cash business. And, and so I, I, I'm kind of skeptical of the amount of actual revenue that will be reported that, um, and that they're saying, but more importantly, in my own view, the state of Michigan doesn't have rules set up yet on how to maintain it, how to regulate it, how not to regulate. There's no rules, there's no guidelines yet. And, um, how, how are, you know, how, how, how do we, how do we do it for zoning, the building department? I, I mean, there's, there's no rules. And until there's a more definite set of rules in place, uh, maybe we can bring it back and look at it then. But I know Elginak's opting out, a lot of the, a lot of the municipalities in the counties are, is gonna be-
I haven't even seen any guidelines.
No, there aren't any.
Yeah.
And what, I, I can remember, I was at a Michigan Township Association, uh, meeting or seminar, and it was over medical marijuana, you know, this couple, and it was already in, in effect for over a year. There was someone from the Michigan, oh, whoever does it, the licensing and guidelines or whatever the company or the-
Laura.
The, was that?
Laura.
Laura there, there was, um, law enforcement people there, there was attorney, and between the Laura, the Michigan, you know, group that regulates it and the law, they, they couldn't even decide, and this is a year after. I mean, they, they're looking at, well, heck, we don't know what, what to do. So, um, so past practice, I, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in the state coming up with some, uh, good, good rules and, and guidelines for these in the near future.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-55, prohibition of marijuana establishment ordinance. Township of Clay.
Okay, motion of support, any discussion?
I found it interesting that in Colorado, one of the first places to legalize the recreational use, like, the statistic was 75% of municipalities in the state opted out.
75, 80% of Colorado opted out, and same with Washington, yep.
That was an interesting statistic, and they're a couple of years ahead of us.
Yep.
So, I'm, I'm gonna support this ordinance.
Yeah.
Alaska, you can buy it in Alaska.
I would imagine they might need it up in Alaska.
They don't pay much attention to that part of the world.
They have long winters there.
Yeah. You never hear about, much about that.
You can buy whale meat in Alaska too. I used to live there. Um, you know, I kind of, it's a good thing I'm not at this, in Lansing, because the way my mind is, you know, the state of Michigan is opting out of the federal marijuana law, why can't we opt out of Obamacare at the same time? You know, Michigan will opt out of Obamacare. But, uh, we'll, we'll track a lot of businesses then. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shortky?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have AT&amp;T Metro Act, right-of-way extension. This is renewing the, um, our agreement with AT&amp;T, uh, really nothing's changed. They pay so much per foot of line that's in our road right-of-way, I think we get about 80 grand from them a year, if I remember right in their budget. And, uh, this is, uh, extending, extending the agreement that we have. I, I really don't think we could say, no, we want more money per foot, this is all hashed out with the Public Service Commission and, and technically too, it is the county right, right-of-way too. The county actually owns our roads, not us, but we are able to get a little bit of income from this.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion that we support and approve the Metro Act right-of-way permit extension.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shortky?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, next we have Fire Department, CDO Repair, 1390. Need some impellers or something? Did I see?
Uh, we use that watercraft for jobby noonor and also raft off. It helps us get in to areas where we cannot get in with our bigger boats to, uh, to assist people that need medical attention. Uh, what had happened is, either we had ingested a small rock, uh, and it, uh, kind of tore up the impeller, but, uh, throughout the years, going through the shallow waters with the sand, it did wear out the, the wear ring in it, and that needed to be replaced. So, since they had it apart, they said you might as well put everything brand-new in it, and then it'll be good for, uh, a period of time for us.
How old is the watercraft?
Uh, they were about, uh, 2010, so they're eight years old.
Going to nine years old now.
How many times a year do we use these, chief?
Use them for raft off, we use them for, again, for, uh, jobby noonor, we use them for float down, uh-
Four or five times.
Four or five times a year.
Is there ever emergency where we, we take these out?
I have not had it-
I mean, we'd probably use the airboat before these.
Yes.
We have one.
We have two.
Two, that's what I thought, two, yeah.
I believe we also discussed with, especially with all of our newer, um, employees that you have down there, and I mean, this would be probably a good tool for them to get out and learn the waterways.
Right.
It's a little bit easier and cheaper than throwing them out there in a boat. Not that they don't need to make sure they can operate the boat as well, but just for, um-
Makes sense.
-understanding where everything is out there, because some people call it- Understanding where everything is out there, because some people call it this and some people call it this, but it's still the same place.
There's quite a few cuts out there that we take to get to Muscamoot Bay and to other parts of the Fisher Bay, and that would help, again, like Cindy said, for them to navigate through.
Unless you're an avid fisherman, you wouldn't know those cuts.
Chief, is this a valuable piece of equipment for you?
In some ways it is, when you're looking at jobby nooners and raft off, because with all the boats out there, the anchor lines, we can get right in there where we have our boats.
Especially getting in the gauntlet.
Yep, with the, the lower units on there, and then you got to worry about tangling ropes and...
Yeah, that's the only problem with a jet drive.
Yep.
Don't know what you suck into them.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fire department expenditure for $1,390.75 for a jet ski CDO personal watercraft repair, taking out a line on 206-000-931-00.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Fire Department, part-time new hire. He seems like he's well qualified.
Yes, he is. He would have been here tonight, but he works afternoons. He's switching his schedule, so the next board meeting, he will be here. I have two that I need to bring in front of me. Excuse me?
What's his rating?
Rating, he's firefighter, too. He's an EMT. He has all the NIMs certifications. He also, he's...
Hazmat?
Hazmat. First responder, operations level. So he meets our qualifications that we need. And he's retired military. Army military.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Colvin, that's the way you pronounce it, Colvin or Calvin?
Calvin.
Calvin, it's got Colvin.
I'm sorry, Coleman, Colvin.
Colvin Taylor?
Taylor.
As a member of the Clay Township Fire Department.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next we have Board Member Comments, Cindy.
I've got a laundry list that I left on my desk, so of course, now that I'm on the spot, I can't remember one thing that was on any of them, so I'm good. Nice list on my desk.
Brilliant, next time.
I will.
Mark?
We had a planning commission meeting last Wednesday. We're discussing the Field Road Site condo development project. I think 13 individual units going in there, so not condominiums, they are individual homes, just the...
Similar to what they're doing on Falkert, too.
Yeah, yeah, same, similar, different developer.
Right.
Where's that at, Field Road, you said?
Field Road, yeah, halfway down.
Good job, chief, good job. John? Clay Township?
Joanne?
We haven't had any ZBA meetings as late, but on the island, they are continuing to work on Bar Harbor. They've put a couple...
Cross culvert.
Terrible old culverts they replaced and they got to, you know, make the drainage right, and they dug out, people probably around that corner, that one ditch was just full of plants and everything, they're cleaning it out. And so it's, it'll make it nice for the properties there that they won't stay so wet, it'll be able to drain away.
Yeah, there in Petoskey.
Yeah.
They did one.
Yeah, did one on Petoskey.
Problem was there is sand, and the frayer wash, it pushes the sand in the culvert.
Yeah.
And so you always clean them out there.
On Bar Harbor, they had so many trees that they dug out all these big cottonwoods and stuff.
Yeah, they removed like 35 trees.
Yeah, it was really in sad shape. Yep, so that's good for the island drainage. That's it.
My turn? Um, I just wanted to let the board know that I know when you see audit presentation on a agenda, everyone gets scared, but I actually look forward to it, coming from an accounting background. And I just want to say big kudos to clerk, the treasurer, the supervisor for all working together and give us something to gloat about. In a big document like that, you usually look for a significant deficiency of which there was none, so good job.
Thank you, and we couldn't say that four or five years ago.
I know.
So...
It was nice to open it up and know right where to go, and there's nothing there.
That's right.
Good job.
Thank you.
Being a professional estimator, I get to see a lot of damaged properties, fire damage, water damage, wind damage. So this is sort of a little PSA. In the last three months, I have been on three devastating fires, all created by portable dehumidification units. Little portable dehues, and a lot of people put them in the basement and they've got little pumps on them, and then they plug them in and forget about them. Check them, okay? Just make sure they're working correctly, make sure they're being serviced, make sure there's not a recall on one of your particular units, because the damage that it creates is devastating.
Three of them.
Three of them in three months.
Dehumidifiers?
Dehumidifiers.
Fire underneath your house, that's not a good spot.
No, they smolder. So what happens is the pumps overheat and these have a little meltdown. Have you ever seen plastic smolder? It's over a long period of time and it creates hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage. It's awful, absolutely awful. So I just wanted to share some of my findings and secondly, go Natalie.
That's right.
Be strong, girl.
Percy?
Um, I just want to say that we mailed tax bills out last week, so I know I received mine on Friday.
Yay!
I think if you're, we've had some calls, if your mail is being forwarded, well, it's going to take a few more days, but you should be anticipating those in the mail, and they're due February 14th, but we will be open the 20th, December 26th and 27th, if you want to get your tax bills paid in 2018.
Thank you, yeah, I went to Johnny Legas Saturday afternoon and everybody got their tax bills that day. No, that's okay, no, it was all good. I just want to say, you know, you know, we're coming up real fast on the, on the holiday season, the Christmas season, and everyone be careful out there and go Nat. I, you know what, I've never met Natalie, I'll tell you that, but I, I know a lot of people who have. And everybody who I've talked to, Ryan Milrow is the principal of the high school, Janice, our deputy clerk, knows her real well. My girlfriend used to get, get her younger brother and sister off the bus and became good friends, her friends, they all say what a great person she is. So I know a lot of people who know you, and you have a whole community behind you. And in any rehab kind of situation, you can get down and depressed about it sometimes. When that happens, be strong. Okay, any, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, ayes, let's go.
Ayes.
Thank you for coming, everybody.